We'll open the meeting of the Select Board on July 27th, 2020. If you could all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag. United States.
And to the Republic. One nation, united. If you could all please remain standing for a moment of silence for all the men and women, past and present, who help protect us and our great country. And please keep in mind, all our healthcare workers, who like are normal heroes, run towards the problem, not away from the problem. Thank you all very much, please be seated. Okay. First thing on the agenda is the Black Bass Grill complaint and review of patio hours. I don't see him.
Should we vote to have Sean sign the warrant?
Yeah, we could do that.
Make a motion that we authorize Mr. McInnis to sign the warrant on behalf.
Okay, did somebody second that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, roll call vote, Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Talabom.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. Haron.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Sign away.
All right.
Or stamp away, or whatever you have to do. Okay. I don't see Mr. Rooney from the Black Bass Grill. Let's see. I know he had an issue this morning, but I was pretty sure that he was going to be.
I'm here, sir.
Oh.
Sorry, I'm not good at this. I'm sorry.
Well, you could be.
Neither is Stanley.
You could be a selectman, yeah.
Are you there?
Okay, yeah, we'll hear you, see you.
All right, yes, sir.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. The important thing is that you're here. Okay, so we've had a complaint about the Black Bass Grill and Mrs. Semus. You need to unmute yourself.
Down the corner of your screen.
I don't know how to.
Okay.
Everybody.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. Would you like to start by expressing what your complaint is?
Sure, sure. So my name is Fatima Semus, and we own the house on Ford Bridge Street, which abuts the Black Bass. And I just wanted to meet with the board because of the late night dining that's going on there. We have no problem with outdoor dining, this is the new world, and that's fine. I just feel that the dining goes on from right till 11 o'clock, sometimes 12 o'clock, and then it just becomes like a bar setting out there. It's loud, it's boisterous, and I just feel there should be some kind of a cutoff time that works for Matt, it works for us, it works for the neighbors. Because people just go in there and they come in, they roll in late, 10, 11 o'clock, and you're drinking out there. And I just feel, because we're in a neighborhood setting, we need to have it somewhat controlled, so it doesn't go on all night like that. Looking on his website, I did see that it does say, and I know this is under normal hours, that he's open till 12 or 1 o'clock for indoor, but it's happening outdoor, and I just think that it needs to be addressed. Just because it just, all the neighbors feel the same way, it's just that we're the butter, so we get hit the worst. Last month, month of June and beginning of July, he had music out there on Fridays and Saturdays. The music was going on till 11, sometimes midnight. And so that went on for a while, and then after a while, I did send Matt an email explaining that the music could only happen on a Sunday till 9 o'clock, as directed previously. And honestly, on a Sunday, he was shutting down at 9 o'clock. So he was doing that, based on the ordinance that we have. But it was going on on Fridays and Saturdays. But I have to say that after we addressed it with him, we haven't had the loud music, you know, a guy on a guitar singing until 11 and 12 o'clock. But right now, my main focus is coming up with an agreement that he closes down within a reasonable hour and not have this bar setting outside until 11 and 12 o'clock.
Okay. It sounds like there's two or three things going on there. One, the website says that, Matt, your kitchen closes at 8:30.
I don't control my website, sir. I've had to try to change it, but, you know, it's changing my website and Facebook and Google machine and any other social media item or TripAdvisor. Sometimes, what if I didn't have a website? So I'm not trying to challenge you on that, but at the end of the day, during this time, I have more issues to worry about than trying to figure out social media and hours on my page that I don't control. So, I mean, like, I'm just trying to make money and make right during the time, it's hard enough. So, you know, I mean, my website could say that I'm open on Mondays and I'm not. So, you know, the Google machine sometimes says things that, you know, I'm, you know, we're open for lunch and we're not, so.
Yeah, it's not a Google thing, it's definitely on your website.
Right, right.
The point is, the state according to the governor's orders, we're in Phase 3, not Phase 4. So if you're.
Yep.
So that means that somebody can eat and have a cocktail or a beer while they're eating. That doesn't mean they can stay three hours after they're eating and continue to drink. Because then you've turned your restaurant into a bar, which is not legally open at this point.
Oh, I understand that, sir. Everybody that's here eats.
Well, okay. And after they're done eating, they don't continue to drink?
Well, they're drinking after, yeah. If they want to have dessert, sure.
Yeah.
Is it, I mean, I'm not, I want to be as peaceful as possible, sir. This is, I don't want to argue with you, not by any means. But I would like to know where the governor says that they have to eat the entire time. So let's say you went to, again, just trying to give an example. Let's say that you went out to eat, and let's say that the place is full, and it might take about 35 to 40 minutes. Is the person just supposed to take up the table space? Then, I mean, we're not getting preorders, so what are they going to do at their table space?
Well, you know, clearly the governor could have given out better direction. We've run into that several times along the way here.
Well, but the governor didn't say that. The governor said that, you know, here it is, you know, we're not acting as a bar. Our bar, in fact, I don't even open my indoor space, because I don't feel like the governor, I don't think he waited as long as he originally said he was going to. Yeah, I mean, he opened it up, what was it, two weeks ago? And he originally said that he was going to do it on like the 29th, like the end of July. We're not even at that date yet. So I don't open inside, because I don't, I do what's best for the safety of my team, my team's family, my family, and my customers and their family. So we're just trying to make money and get it done. You know, I understand that, you know, the music thing, yes, Miss Semus. We did have music on Friday, we did not have music on Saturday ever, actually. I can tell you what Fridays we had. Sunday, yes, ma'am, we did have it, but they started early. And that was my call, I misread the license, because I did have music last summer outside the other nights as well. So that was, you know, I apologize for that, that's certainly my fault. And, you know, I can work with that and not do it again, that's not a problem for me. But the noise, you know, I think that's the issue, is just the main noise. So, but there's projected noise. I could have a full patio at 9:00 PM, and that's still dinnertime. I mean, I have people coming off the boats at 11 o'clock. My kitchen stays open until at least midnight, because we're trying to do, like you say, Mr. Gracie, that, you know, yeah, we want you to eat while you're here. And, you know, we are not a bar, and we've never been a bar. We're a restaurant that happens to have a bar. You know, it's not like down the street where there are bars that happens to have food. You know, we are very different. And any of my customers will tell you that, you know? And we've always been known for food, so I'm not going to, I don't want to argue with you, sir. But I understand where you're coming from, but I'm also reading the guidelines from the governor from there, you know, I mean, if he's giving out this process, then, yeah, I'm just trying to follow the process the best that I can and do well for my family, support my community, and be in business another 10 years, hopefully, you know?
All that is understood, but the fact of the matter is, the governor has said, you have to be eating while you're drinking. Again, it's not meant to entice people to sit around a table and drink while, they can drink while they're waiting for their food, or they can drink while they're eating their food, and they can finish up afterwards, but that doesn't mean it's easy to sit there, because then you are turning your place into a bar as much as you can say you're not.
Well, I understand that, but I don't have customers that are here for three hours at a time. I have a 90-minute seating limit, because I want to turn the tables so we can make more money.
Okay.
And my customers understand that. I mean, I, you know, this is a different summer than any other summer, obviously, for many reasons. But, you know, usually we have all these people from out-of-state plates and everything that come in, and my regulars don't come in in the summertime, because they just don't want to see out-of-state people. It's just, I mean, you know, it is what it is. But I'm not seeing those plates, I'm seeing all of my regulars come in, and they know that I have rules, and I want to do the best for the rules. And they know that, that they, you know, hey, they want to let the next guy come in too and enjoy themselves as well. You know what I mean?
Yeah, that's, but that's only one of the issues. I mean, the issue with, the other issue is that you're not supposed to be having outside entertainment. And you've done, let me finish, please.
Yes, sir, sorry. This is hard to do, this Zoom thing, I'm sorry.
And I remember the last time you were before us, you jokingly said that you're willing to push the envelope and get away with as much as you can, and I, we all thought that was clever, but we didn't think you were actually going to do it. So, I mean, if you're supposed to be doing something only on Sunday, and you're doing it on Thursday or Friday or whatever else you do, people are going to notice, and that's a problem, that's a violation of your license, okay? You also can't have music blaring out loud. You can have some music outside, but that doesn't mean you can turn it into a rock studio or whatever kind of music you play and bother the neighbors. That was why, that was why we had the hearing in the first place when you applied to the license, so that you could understand that your neighbors have rights too, and have a right to live, and live their lives without disturbance. So I'm a little concerned that, it looks like you've pushed the envelope on this, and if you said you had music last year at different days, then you would violate your license back then also.
Right, and I'll let you think, sir.
No, I'm just saying, so I mean, two wrongs don't make a right.
No, I.
You know, so the issue is now, what are you going to do to appease your neighbors that are complaining? And I don't blame them for complaining. I wouldn't want to live next to a place that's raucous until the wee hours of the morning, even if you want to not run your place that way. Sometimes when people are drinking, that's what happens. And things get a little out of hand, and again, they can transform your place in a moment's notice, between the quiet dining area that you want and something else. And is that something that bothers me, okay?
Okay, understood. I mean, like I said, I haven't, and since, and it wasn't, Miss Semus, the email that you sent me was on the 14th, and the town, Christine called me prior to that. And I spoke with her, and I haven't had music since then, even on Sunday. So I just wanted to be, like, I understood that we needed to have this discussion before, you know, that I went ahead and did anything else. And then, you know, you did also mention that I needed to show up today, otherwise I couldn't proceed with any music, which, you know.
I think.
I understand that.
You admitted that things have calmed down lately, if I interpreted that correctly.
And, yes, sir, she did say that. And I.
But they could go out of control in a moment's notice again, and that's what we don't want to happen.
Right, I understand that, but I'm not trying to do that either. I mean, I was getting ready to say that, like, we have dinner music, for example. I'm here at the restaurant in Dartmouth, because this is my business, and I'm not going to do a Zoom call on my house, it doesn't make sense to me. So I'm here on property now. So, I mean, the music outside that we have, like, dinner music for, which is essentially like Van Morrison radio, or whatever you want to call it. And the last, since the call, I had to shut it down at 9:00 PM every night, just so. Then, after that, it's just, you know, ambient customer noise. I mean, we're not playing, I'm not playing music out there, I understand, and I don't want to be, I don't want to be that guy, I get it, and yep, I made a mistake, I understand that. But I need to, like, you know, it is, you know, we're not doing it. You know, I appreciate what you're saying too about, you know, am I going to do it again? And no, I'm not. Not trying, you know, I understand what you're saying, sir, I get it. And I want to be part of this community as long as possible. I mean, I want my son to be able to come here and run this one day for himself too, you know? So.
Yeah, I can tell you, your place has a good reputation. I don't want to see that get spoiled by a few blisters along the way, okay? So we certainly need you to play by the rules. There are always rules in life, whether we like them or not.
Right, yes, sir.
And so let me ask the board members, any comments or questions? David Talabom, please.
Yep, look, it's a, it's a business district with a successful business, it's been there a long time. Next to it is a place where people sleep, and that's an issue right off the bat. It seems to me that we need to protect the business, to stay in business and do well. We owe that to the business. And to do something that's reasonable, to make sure that the residents, although they are, they are in a business district, they have a right to some kind of ruling, that they know where they stand. It seems to me we need to just reestablish some of the rules that are specific to what he needs to do, and then he has to just do it, and agree upon what they are, and stay with it.
Well, we tried to do that when he applied for the license in the first place, and the license specifically says entertainment is limited only to 9:00, 9:00 PM, inside the restaurant, doesn't say anything about outside the restaurant.
Except for Sunday.
Well.
Well, is it, do we need to have some clarity on what the rules are at this point in time? Does everyone know what the rules are?
I believe it says, I mean, I can grab it off the wall here.
I have it right in front of me.
Okay, yes, sir.
It does say, inside the restaurant, something's only outside patio until 9:00 PM, does say that. But again, that doesn't say anything about Thursday, doesn't say anything about 10 o'clock at night, doesn't say anything about 11 o'clock at night, doesn't say anything about, once in a while we're going to do this or that, you know, the rules are pretty strict and strict.
Yes, sir, and not to interrupt, but the, I mean, before I had the entertainment license, anytime that I wanted to do anything inside or outside, I came to y'all for special permit, like a one day, if I did a charity event, or if we had a wedding or something like that, then. So it's not, I'm not, you know, I'm just trying to make it work. So, but, you know, I, I understand, I understand that I made a mistake.
Mr. McDonald, please.
Got a question for Sean. Mr. McInnis, does the entertainment license that he has, does that include, basically, music via electronic radio, whatnot?
Generally, the music it stipulates is bi-music. So there's generally not a stipulation for, like, I guess, mood music, for lack of a better term, but outside music, it's clear, it's just outside.
Right. I mean, the license only has, you can only have outside music on Sundays, that's it, until 9 o'clock. He cannot have it on Monday through Saturday. I'm just a little, I'm a little, sometimes I'm a, I'm a little concerned about the outdoor music being pumped out, you know, ambient dining music. There are times, and I think Mr. Haron can also attest to this, there are times that noise on the waterfront has a tendency sometimes to bounce a lot more than somewhere else because of the openness and because of what's there. So I'm wondering, you know, the mood music on, you know, I don't have a problem with, you know, dining by music, but, you know, I think at some point in time, you know, you close the kitchen at 8:30, at least on your website, maybe you leave it open, but I think at nine, after 9 o'clock, I think you're out, that music that comes from the outs, from an electronic source be cut off. The other question that I have is from Mrs. Semus. Mrs. Semus, have you heard or witnessed any of this stuff?
Yes.
Just coming from, you have?
Yes, yes, that's why we're here, yes. And, you know, I understand Matt needs to run a business, I get it, you know? I just, I just would like, you know, for the dining, and I agree with everything that you're saying about the music. The dining part of it, the evening lengthy dining part, which he's calling dining, is more of a bar-like setting, and it, they're very boisterous, you know, and you can see they're drinking. I have my son's friends go there, everybody's down there, it's a hotspot to go to. The kids like to go there, the younger crowd, and great, but it's more drinking than it is eating, and that's why it's loud, and that's why they're there till 11 and midnight. And they're outside, if they were inside, I could care less. It's just, I'm just asking for some type of an ordinance that works for Matt and works for the neighbor, for all the neighbors next door, including ourselves. Maybe, you know, have the kitchen closed at a certain time, and people, you know, leave, they have to shut down by a certain time.
The reason why I asked is because I'm just reading your email to Christine on the 13th, and it said it was brought to your attention. So that, to me, when something's being brought to your attention means you don't have a knowledge of it, somebody brought it to your attention.
That's correct.
The common is your renter, your weekly renter, or your bi-weekly or tri-weekly renter, saying this. What also is concerning is Matt's letter in response to that regarding that, not knowing who the person was, but that the person was yelling at the diners and then came over the fence with a lacrosse stick. You know, I don't understand what that's all about, and that's a little concerning too. So I don't, you know, the thing is this, the thing is this, I am not going to, I am not going to tell a restaurant when they have to close their kitchen. It's not my concern, my concern is that they follow the rules, they follow the license, they follow everything that they have agreed to. And when it comes to a point where the restaurant becomes a problem in the neighborhood, and this is, and Black Bass has had a history years ago about some type of, you know, of noise problems with another neighbor that we haven't heard from in years. And we have not heard from any complaints about the Black Bass, as far as I know, if I recall correctly, for at least a few years, if not three to four more, three or four years. And, you know, I understand, we've gone through this, we've gone through this road before, neighbor versus restaurant, especially down in the village. And it comes down to, and basically it comes down to this. Matt, you got to run your business accordingly, the way it's supposed to be done, you dumb by the license. You are in a neighborhood, it's, you're in a unique situation. You're not at the mall, you're not on Farnes Corner Road, you're not on Route 6, you're in a neighborhood. You have to be cognizant of your neighbors, because the more complaints we get from the neighbors, the more that you're going to be brought before us. And you don't want to do that, I don't want to do that, and, you know, you got to run your business the right way to where you are not being a detriment to your surroundings. You know, and if it means that your ambient music on the outside for dining is shut off at 8 o'clock, then fine. If it's, you know, and I would suggest to go back and take a look at the governor's orders on opening up, because we can't, we're not an enforcement, we don't enforce that as a board, that's the state, and maybe also, maybe the building inspector or the board and health, I'm not sure, but Sean can help me out with that. But that's something that has to be done. If you're a restaurant, you have the restaurant, you have your customers, if your kitchen's open beyond the website time that you have, you know, I suggest whoever does your website or whoever did it, fix it. Even if during the COVID times, fix it, other restaurants have. I know other small restaurants have, you know? Just don't leave it out there, because now this has become a sticking point. You know, you say your kitchen's closed at 8:30, Mr. Semus thinks it's done at 8:30, you say you keep it open, you know, at 10 or whatever, or it even says on your website that if you have people come in, you provide healthy snacks for them at the bar. So, you know, you got to be, you got to balance that. You have to balance a business and you have to balance your surroundings. And I'll be honest with you, the other thing, you know, so, I mean, I've said my rant.
Can I just, can I just say one thing? You asked if I witnessed it myself, yes, I did get calls, and I lived very close to the village, and my husband and I would drive by at the hours that we were set, that we were told that they were, we witnessed it. I'm, I might have not have been at that house that particular week, but I live very close to the village, and my job was to go by there and say, hey, is this really happening? So yes, back to your question, I want you to know that we did witness it.
Okay, Mr. Haron, I saw you here first, please.
Yes, thank you. I agree with Sean McDonald. A couple of years ago, Matt did have a problem with noise in the front of the building, and he remedied that situation, and I believe Matt will want, once again, remedy the situation in the back. And I do not want to interfere with this operation of his kitchen. It's vital to him surviving. So I think we can work with Matt and move this issue forward.
Mr. Talabom.
What I think I'm hearing, and Matt, if you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but the difference this year of years in the past is no one is sitting inside, is that correct? It's all outside?
Yes, sir.
Well, is that a coincidence that we're having issues with noise? It seems to me this is a, COVID is, we're another victim of a COVID situation, and it sounds like that's the real problem. Have you always had the kitchen open, 10, 11 o'clock in the past as well?
11 usually on the weekends, yes, sir.
Okay, so the real difference is no one's sitting inside?
Yes, sir, and that I don't.
Everyone's sitting outside, waiting for their food, sitting, maybe they finished, maybe they didn't, and that's the problem. And we all, in some form, are victims of COVID-19, and it sounds like that's the real problem here. So how do we remedy that problem? To keep you in business, keep it going, and satisfy the neighbors?
Those are good points, I think it's really, it's really up to Matt, unless he needs us to do something about it. You know, Stanley?
Yeah, Matt.
Yes, sir.
Fatima, I really think we all want to do the right thing for the residents, and we all want to do the right thing for the businesses, there's no question about it. Let's get together, Miss Semus and Matt, and talk face-to-face, have a small, have a meeting, and be on the same page and do the right thing. And I think, I think we can move forward with this without any other issues.
I will try, I will work with Matt, I have no problem. My understanding he has to run a business, and we respect that, that's his livelihood. I just feel that this should be a little bit more respect for, you know?
Yeah, agreed, agreed. And I think, I think Matt will work with you, and hopefully that these issues will go away.
Yeah, I mean, I have no doubt that Matt can fix this, the question is, will he? And will it stay once it's, once it's fixed?
I'm convinced he will.
Yeah, well, yeah, the proof is in the pudding, so we'll have to see.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Miss Semus.
Thank you.
Sean?
Just as a reiteration, you know, this, we don't do three strikes. We do one strike, two strikes, that's it. So we are now, as a board, we are now being put on notice about noise problems at the Black Bass. Okay? Now it's up to you to fix it, and, you know, and also to, yeah, you need to address it.
Yes, sir.
And I have full confidence that you will, you have in the past, and I think that you'll do it.
Is everybody, is everybody comfortable with that solution, including Mrs. Semus?
Yeah, I just, you know, we'll just keep an eye on, I'll just keep, you know, I will reach out to Matt. I will just, you know, keep an eye on what's going on, and hopefully he'll address it, and it will work for both of us, because I understand that he has to have outdoor dining, that's not the complaint here. Outdoor dining has never been the complaint, it's the, it's the extension. Outdoor dining has never been the complaint. It's the, it's the extended hours and the drinking and, and, and the loud, boisterous, uh, out of that, that's all. So if he's willing to rectify some of it, and then I, you know, I'm okay with it. I want him to continue with his business. I get it, like, you know? Uh, everything is done outside. I don't understand why, like, most restaurants are doing in and out dining. His is just strictly outside. Um, I think if there was some of the dining going on inside, this probably wouldn't even be an issue because he would have indoor-outdoor, but he's decided just to do outdoor, so, you know.
If I, if I recall, if, if I recall, many, I haven't been to the Black Bass in a long time. If I recall, it's a very small place. I think you, if you do the social distancing, you have one person on one end of the building, one person on the end of the end of the building, and that's it.
Yeah.
So you're limited to two customers.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, you know.
It's a puzzle for everyone. All the restaurants are having the same issues. Uh, we're in a whole, an awful different time, and everyone's trying to survive. But that doesn't mean that you, that Matt should not abide by the rules and regulations that, that he signed up for. And, and I know he'll do it, and I'm sure you'll, you'll have a cordial neighbor.
Because that's what we're striving for. That's why we're having this meeting.
Thank you.
That's what we're striving for.
Thank you.
Matt, are you okay with this and understand that people are watching?
Yes, sir.
And we, we expect you to fix this?
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is every, everybody happy with that solution? Do we have to do anything further?
It's fine for now, yeah.
The board?
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes, sir.
Well, you did mention, uh, we would get, have a live meeting at some point. I would like that very much.
Well, I think that you, you and Fatima should get together and, and speak to each other.
Okay. I was just wanted to make sure it was, if it's with you or not with you.
No, no, I don't think it's necessary. I think you're two adults, and I think you can come to an agreement. And, and a fair agreement that will be, that will be adequate for both of you, and then it'll solve the situation.
Okay, yes, sir. I just wanted, didn't want to misunderstand what you were saying.
No, no, I, no, I don't think you need to be a referee.
Matt, the fewer, the fewer meetings you have with us, that means the things are going well, so. So you, you, so if you can make it all, fix all the problems without meeting with us, that's a good thing.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, uh.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yeah.
Good luck.
And Fatima, thank you.
Thank you.
Just keep us posted if things are going well or if they're not going well.
I shall, I shall.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Gracie, can I add one thing? Not related to the, the Black Bass, but towards, to outdoor seating. So we view the, the governor's outdoor seating order as just that, uh, providing, uh, the town provides a license to allow for outdoor seating and serving of alcohol to those outdoor seats as part of the meals. Uh, we've instructed, uh, any establishments that wanna do more, like outdoor entertainment or provide modifications to the outdoor area. Uh, they need to come in, uh, for a hearing in front of the board for anything above and beyond just the outdoor seating. And as you know, uh, you are the licensing authority representing the board on the outdoor seating, so that's been taken care of. But, uh, sometimes they wanna do other things like outdoor entertainment or modifications. And just so the board knows, we've directed them to come before the board is a hearing.
Okay, but just one question. Oh, he already has a license that allows him to do Sunday.
This is unrelated to, to the Black Bass, so they're all set. But if he wanted to come back and look for more days of outdoor entertainment, that would be a hearing.
Right, okay.
So I think some establishments may be getting confused, thinking if they have outdoor seating, that includes anything they had related to the previous license of music, as it retains the music or entertainment. So it doesn't. It's, it would have to be a separate, uh, application and meeting before the board.
Yeah, I could tell you the restaurants that have come before my authority to sign for, I've tried to make it very clear what the distinction is and, uh, what they can do and what they can do without be, being a, uh, in trouble. So. I just wanted to point out, this is slightly different because he already has a license. That was, that's not what the other people, uh, have already, so.
Correct.
That is this for Sunday till nine o'clock. Anything beyond that is different. So.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Matthew and, uh, Fatima. Take care. Okay. New business, Board of Registries appointments.
Uh, yes, the, uh, the Democratic Board of Registers requires a new appointment. Uh, my, the previous person has resigned. So, uh, Mr. Griffith here is the representative of the Dartmouth Democratic Town Committee. And, uh, the way this works is he needs to appoint or present, uh, candidates to the board for selection, so.
Mr. Griffith, the floor is yours.
Okay, um, I was notified by Lynn Maderas that, um, there was going to be a vacancy and that the Democratic Town Committee had to come up with nominees. I then immediately contacted the Dartmouth Democratic Town Committee. We talked amongst ourselves. Um, I eventually got a hold of the, um, the rules of the Elections Commission, and it became pretty clear that uh, the nominees that we send to you cannot be, uh, appointed or elected to any office uh, within the town. Uh, they can't be an election worker. They can't be the chair or treasurer or principal officer of any political committee. Uh, and, um, so the, the first one excludes all members of the Dartmouth Democratic Town Committee because we're elected. So none of us could do it. So I then set out to search for Democrats who could fulfill this position. And I went through dozens and dozens of, um, people that I sought. Um, you know, their interest in it. Um, I got, um, some rejections. Um, people didn't have time, uh, they didn't know exactly what the position was. I explained it as best I could. And, um, uh, so the requirement is that I give you three nominees. And I, uh, spoke with Mr. McGinnis about that, and he said, look, send me whatever you can prior to the twenty-second, so that he, like, assumes he could get my report to, um, all of you on the select board. Um, and I failed. Uh, so I have two nominees. Both have agreed. Both are qualified by everything that I can tell, uh, from the manual for the Board of Registries and Election Commissions. And so I, I am able to submit two names, not three.
Okay. I don't know how the board feels, but I, I generally have a problem picking between two people that I know nothing about. Uh, Mr. McDonald.
Um, just as a, just as a, um, regarding the qualifications. Um, if I'm not mistaken, I believe town meeting, elected town meeting members are eligible to be, um, chosen. Uh, I think that's under state law. Um, but I know the other, the other parts, committee members and all that. But the, but more so, um, I believe we, we're supposed to have one Democrat, one Republican, and one unenrolled and, or independent or whatever.
Yes.
I'm perfectly honest with you, that is such an archaic system. Because what happened to the Independent Party? What happened to the Libertarians? What happens to the Greenpeace? What happens to, you know, the Moose Party? What happens to the guy who wears Red Hat Party? You know, I mean, that, that's just, it, it's, you know, if you're gonna have a board of registrars, they should just be chosen. You know, just, I, I just, I don't agree with the party thing. I never have. Um, that's just, uh, my, my soapbox.
Okay, anybody else? So what do folks suggest we do with this?
Good question.
I thought.
Really? Well, yeah. Mr. Griffith has two names, is that correct?
Yes.
So, um, should we just move forward with the two for now, until you can find a third person?
You only need to select one.
Right.
So he, he's required to present three. I think he's gone through, if you read through the packet, he made a, a a substantial effort to try to identify three people. He was only able to identify two. Um, and according to the town clerk, if this needs to be done, uh, as soon as possible.
Who are the other remaining members of the Board of Trustees right now? I mean, Board of Registries?
How many are remaining right now?
No, I know there's two others. Uh, is it still, uh, Attorney Weeks?
I'd have to find out who those members are.
Wait a minute, let me look up. Talk among yourselves.
Yeah, see, see, I, I have no problem with only, I'm only having two candidates instead of three. The problem I have is, how do we pick between the two candidates? Uh, not, not, not actually knowing them or interviewing them or having a resume or having anything. It's that we have nothing. Do we flip a coin? Do we, do we ask for his recommendation? I mean, how, how do we do this?
All right, yeah, it's Weeks and Defrius.
Mr. Griffith, what do you suggest?
Um, I was as careful as I could be to find two people who I thought could do the job, are willing to do it, are enthusiastic about it. These are both upstanding members of the Dartmouth community. Um, I, he, literally, you could flip a coin and you won't go wrong. I didn't, I didn't send anyone to you who I didn't think could do it.
Hey, that's no help.
Is there any possibility we have room for two people rather than choose one?
No, you can't.
That's the law, I guess.
No, there's three. Randy Weeks, uh, is the Republican, uh, pot of the Board of Registries. Mary Ellen Defrius, uh, Mary Ann Defrius is the, um, Mary Ellen, sorry. Mary Ellen Defrius, I believe, is the, uh, is the person who is not. Uh, okay, question is, where is Essex Street in, in Dartmouth? I, I just wanna know the location of the street, cause it's. Anybody know?
Essex?
I believe that's north, if I'm not mistaken. Hold on, let me find out.
Six, uh, behind St. Mary's Cemetery.
Okay, all right, yep, exactly. All right, cause I, cause to be honest with you, I was looking at, uh, balancing, balancing the Board of Registries in town. We have somebody in south, we have somebody in north. So right in the middle, um, would be Aspen Avenue. So I make a motion that we appoint Kathy, uh, Moraglia, uh, as a Democratic, uh, Board of Registries.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Is, that's not like a good idea, the way Sean figured it out?
Well, I, I would, I would only ask that we, two people did come forward, and is this a fair way as opposed to, uh, meeting them and looking at a resume, or is it, is this fair enough? They did both come forward.
Yeah, what, what I, what I was gonna ask, did one person jump at the chance immediately, and they had to cajole the second person? Cause that would, you know, that would help me decide, uh, which of the two to pick. But I agree, there, there, there's, you know, you could do it a thousand different ways. And I'm not sure any one of them would be fair, uh, you know.
Well, I understand with Sean McDonald, trying to do the geographically, but is that fair to both candidates, uh? Without considering their individual.
Honestly, we need to get it done. The primary's coming up. You know, we can't wait.
Okay.
Did, uh, David, do you have, do you have a different idea from Sean's?
No, I, I know they're only to, uh, haven't come before us with a resume, but, uh.
Not enough time, maybe.
Let's vote.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Talabom?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Haron?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes also.
I wanna just thank Mr. Griffith for, for his work. Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, I'd like, he had to go above and beyond to meet through the, the statute requirements, so, yes, thank you, Mr. Griffith.
Very happy to do it.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Uh, what I saw this before is I had to ask the question, you know, in my five and a half years, I've never done this before, so, you know, what happened?
They've been around, the, the current Board of Registries with Tom Brooks, they've been around for quite a number of years.
So do, nothing expires, right? As long as they, as long.
That's their appointment. It's like Supreme Court. It's only when they decide.
Yeah.
Lynn Maderas told me that in all of the years that she has worked in the clerk's office, she has never run an election like this, never.
Yeah. It's interesting, cause it also sounds like the person that didn't wanna do it any longer, probably shouldn't have been doing it because he was a poll worker.
The person, no, the person who was doing it, the Democrat who was doing it, just turned ninety-three.
Wow.
Time, time for a job change.
I, I think that's what he thought.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Griffith. Thank you, everybody, for helping us resolve that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Let's see. Item B, extension of petition articles due date for fall town meeting, uh, to August uh, seventh, two thousand twenty. Mr. McGinnis?
Uh, yes, so you can see, uh, in your packet. So this is really more of a formality, uh, as it relates to the town meeting calendar that, uh, we put together, uh, annually. Uh, the, uh, last day to submit zoning articles, petition articles, is, uh, July twenty-second. Um, there's been, uh, a petition article that's been working with the planning board. I don't know if you remember from, uh, town meet, prior to town meeting this year, there's a, a solar project off of Crossroad. Uh, they are working with the planning board. Uh, that, that's still going to be a petitioned article, so, uh, there's been some back and forth. They're finalizing it, uh, direction of the planning board. So, uh, in working with Attorney Cruz, our town council, it was suggested that we, uh, change the due date uh, from July twenty-second to August seventh this year in order for the applicants to meet with the planning board tonight. Uh, and in case there was any other issues that needed to be clarified or, or, or edited, that they'd have time to do that before the due date, which, if you vote, would now be August seventh.
Okay, board?
I'll move. Second, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to allow the date to be moved. Uh, any discussion? Okay, roll call. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Talabom?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Haron?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, I, um, just, Mr. McGinnis, um, when is the, uh, fall town meeting scheduled for?
Oh, it, it's scheduled for October twentieth.
Okay. That is a.
Feels like we just had it.
I know, that's a, October twentieth is a what?
Uh, uh, Tuesday.
So, right now, it's scheduled for in-person, correct?
Uh, correct. But, uh, depending on the governor's order, which, uh, if that's still in place, um, we'd have to go through the same process we did with this past town meeting.
Okay, I think we should start looking for a Saturday again. Just, but not, uh, not near Halloween, please. I don't wanna hear from the candy, the candy grabbers that were competing on their Halloween.
Uh, that's probably a good idea, because I'll tell you, I don't care what the governor says, I'm not gonna go sit inside an auditorium in October.
Well, the, the remote meeting was very successful, so, um.
It is, and I, I ran one, I ran an, uh, an annual meeting for one of my businesses yesterday, and it was very successful. As a matter of fact, you know, I'll be honest with you, I don't have the confidence that we're gonna do whatever we're gonna do, and part of that confidence is I'm canceling my season tickets for this year. I'm, I'm taking the, I'm taking the pipe, and I'm gonna just weigh off this year and go next year. You know, so, because as it is, I got an email from the Patriots saying, you know, I could be eligible for one or two games. I'm sorry. I, you know, I'm, I'm an eight-game guy. I'm not a one or two-game guy. So I'm just gonna back off for this year, which kinda really, really stinks.
Yeah, it does. You'll have to.
I just don't see, I just don't see a lot of this happening. You know, I, I think we should stop preparing for, you know, uh, a remote town meeting on a Saturday in October.
Yeah, I don't see things changing until there's actually a, a workable vaccine out there. And, and Sean, you'll have to tailgate it all, just to, you know.
Oh, I will.
You, you can tailgate for town meeting now if it's on a Saturday.
Yeah.
What are you cooking?
Usually steak. Quick, quick question. Is this appropriate time to ask how the search is going for a, a temporary, uh, town clerk?
Um, I have an update later in the meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's two, two topics away.
Good.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Board of Public Works Letters of Interest.
Um, I can start this. So we, uh, have one opening, uh, in the Board of Public Works. Uh, we had four, uh, letters of interest in applicants. Um, I think they, they are on here. I'm not sure if one of them.
The three of them.
Three of them. So I, I asked them to, uh, come before the board to, you know, have you interview them or ask them some questions, uh, to gauge their interests. Uh, so, uh, I will present them. Doug Roscoe, um, is, uh, one member.
Who?
Uh, John Price, uh, is another, and, um, Mr. Almy is. Uh, John Price, uh, is another, and, um, Mr. Almy is Robert Almy, and he is the third.
Okay.
Okay, I only see two.
And there's Kevin Murphy also.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin Murphy. Um.
He told me he was having wireless.
I think he had wireless, yeah, Wi-Fi issues.
That's what he, he mean, I mean, this, but I, I only see Mr. Almy and, and Mr. Roscoe.
Right. I don't see Mr. Price. I see Lynn, Maxine, and a Jeffrey Faucher, but.
That's all I see also.
I'll see her.
Well, uh, just perceive what we, we have.
Okay. Um, Mr. Almy, could you just please, first of all, unmute yourself and, uh, just introduce yourself and tell us why you want to do this, this position?
Down in the corner, there you go.
My name is Rob Ashley. Um, I'm a registered professional geologist, and I've got forty-five years' experience. I moved to Dartmouth in, uh, November. I've had to resign my position on the Linfield Water Commission. Uh, I was also on the Linfield Recreation Path Committee. Um, I've got experience managing water districts, doing stormwater programs, uh, and for the last ten years, uh, I've been working as a consultant in, uh, Southern Massachusetts. Um, I believe pretty strongly in giving back to the community. I'm retired now. I have the time to, uh, become involved, and, uh, I've got the kind of experience, I think, that the, uh, that I can contribute to a, a range of the public works issues. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask, uh, answer them.
Anyone have any questions? Or comments?
Yeah, just one, one quick one. Have you, uh, Mr. Almy, have you done any, uh, consulting, uh, in town? With the, the town DPW?
No, I have not.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Almy. Uh, Mr. Roscoe.
Good evening, everybody. How you doing?
Good.
Uh, thanks for letting me come and speak with you tonight. Um, yes, I'm interested in, uh, in serving on the Board of Public Works. Um, you know, I've, I've been involved in town government, I think most of you know, uh, on the board, and three of you I sat on the Finance Committee with, um, I served for about six years. Um, and that's really where I started to become interested in the, in the DPW's operations and financing and its enterprise funds and capital. It's a very complicated organization, which I think is interesting, and I think it's worthy of, of attention and, and some, some effort, uh, in that area. Uh, I also served as the, um, uh, the Chair of the Charter Commission back in two thousand and ten. Um, so, you know, I've, I've, I think I've spent a lot of time volunteering for the town, and this is the next, uh, area I'm interested in, in, in working with in. Um, I think you all know I'm a pretty analytical-minded person. I don't have an ex, I don't have a background in, in public engineering or anything, but I'm an analytical person, I do my homework, I'm a collaborative worker, I'm the kind of guy who's gonna, you know, you know, disagree amiably and work with those, you know, uh, if I disagree with them. So that's the kind of, uh, that's the kind of energy and, and, and focus that I'd like to, you know, give to the board.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Roscoe?
Uh.
Sounds like, oh. Okay. Thanks, Doug. Nice to see you, and thank you for stepping up. Uh, Mr. Heron.
I was just curious whether the applicants and their resumes were forwarded to the current DPW and the people that are presently sitting on the board.
Uh. No, the Select Board is the appointing authority, so it's just sent to the Select Board.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, John.
Uh, it seems important to me that this, this person or persons, uh, would, you know, the, the input from the current DPW board and the DP, head of the DPW might be important for us to weigh going forward as to who should sit there.
Um. I mean, I suppose you could look at it that way. I don't know, I don't know if we've, we've ever done that before. I don't think we've ever asked the opinion of those that are sitting on the board, what they thought.
Um, I don't recall we ever doing that, no.
But, Mr. Tattelbaum.
Uh, yeah, I think this is a, it's a pretty unique decision-making process here, because here we have a individual who has great technical experience and a long-time, uh, involvement in the industry that he wants to volunteer for. And then we have another, a candidate who was, has great town experience, looking from the, uh, from a bird's eye view, how we run the town and finances, and I think the DPW is our third-largest department. Uh, I think it's, um, I personally, and, and no one has the respect that we all have for Dave Hickox, that he's not gonna be around forever. Uh, maybe because we have a big decision here to make that has to do with two distinctly different choices, and maybe it's, uh, appropriate that we ask a few more questions about the, from the board and get some input from them, because, uh, uh, as we all know, Dave Hickox will not be around forever, and I think we're making a decision here that's gonna affect the DPW for a long time. I'm not sure the answer myself, but that's what I'm thinking at this point.
Yep, Sean.
Well, we have four choices. We just have two of them in front of us. Um.
What, what was that, Sean?
I said, we have four choices, two of which are in front of us.
Right. Well, I'm talking, yeah.
Yeah, I know. Um. I don't, I am totally, I'm totally intrigued with Mr. Almy's resume, um, because of the water situation. Um, and I know we have an engineer on the board, and we have a layman on the board. And I'm also intrigued with Doug being on the board because of his, the, the background that he's had. So, I mean, to be honest with you, I wish we had two choices. It'd be very easy.
We did, we, we did for half a minute there.
Yeah, I think Mr. Murphy's trying to, trying to get in on, um, yeah, I know we did. Um, so, but, I, I think at this point in time, I think we should just send all four, uh, resumes over to the, over to the other two, uh, DPW board members. Let them review it, and then just kind of get back with us, get back to us, uh, within a small period of time as to, not so much, um, their choice, um, because it's not their choice to make, but just kind of like, uh, comment. You know, how they feel this person, each person might fit. Cause I want to hear, I would like to hear from either one of them, how each person would fit on the board. And not, and that way will kind of give us a little bit better idea, um, you know, um. Because right now, to be honest with you, I'm kind of stuck between two of them right now.
Yeah, well, I, I would add to that, Sean, if I may, that I think that it's not even picking between two people. It, it's the concept of what is the strength for that board, and I would like to hear from board members, uh, uh, what the kind of concept of, uh, background they would like to have be helpful, as opposed to individual, uh, one versus another, but what, what would the makeup of the DPW best served with the kind of individual that, background? And I personally would like to hear, hear more about that before I made a decision.
Should, uh, I mean, we had already planned not to actually vote on this until the next meeting, so there's, we clearly, we have a couple of weeks. So we, we could fit this in over the two weeks. And I'm wondering if we should, uh, ask that question of the board members, Mr. McGinnis, and probably CC David Hickox too, maybe he has an opinion.
Uh, I, I'll do that. I'll, um, send the resumes to the board and the, uh, DPW director, and I'll, I'll invite them to the next meeting on August tenth, to give, uh, this board their input.
Yeah, that'd be good.
That was great. Everybody agree?
It's a tremendous decision. As, uh, as Dave Tattelbaum mentioned, um, Mr. Hickox will not be around for long, uh, for a long time. Um, and, um, this is a very, very important board. They make, uh, very, the decisions they make will, we will have to live with for quite a while, so. Um, I think we need to be very prudent in that decision. Thank you.
Okay. I'm okay with all that. It sounds like, uh, sounds like that's the plan.
Sounds good to me.
And Mr. Roscoe, thank you for showing up, and, uh, stay tuned.
I, I, I would like to add that, uh, we have some really fine candidates that have
Yes.
entered, and it's really great to see the interest for our town to, we can have these kind of excellent choices. Thank you for coming forward.
Yeah, yes, we do, and that's what makes it so hot. You know, if you only had one that really stood out, then the, the decision would be much easier, but since you have, you have some that are, they're all quite good in their own, own regard, that makes it difficult. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Item D, Burgo Conceptual Plan Discussion. Mr. Burgo, unmute yourself, please.
How you doing, everybody? Good to see you.
Welcome.
I hope everybody's healthy.
So far.
Yeah, we're keeping pretty, uh, pretty tight ship over here too, and it's, it's, it's a scary time.
We hear there's a Zoom virus going around, so we're not sure, so.
Frank, don't pass anything on. Uh, um, do you want me to make the proposal now, or is anybody? I'm sorry?
I said, sure, I think that's, that's
Okay.
Where to go?
Uh, year and a half ago, or maybe a couple of years ago, we went in front of you guys, uh, to try, try and buy the McBride Land. And, um, Mr. McBride, he sent a letter at the last minute not to do it. If I know well and good, that was decided. Uh, but at that time, Mr. Kresman and, um, Mr. Savasano, uh, had made the recommendation for us to go up to on, uh, to try and purchase the land on Reed Road and State Road. The town, we weren't interested because of the wetlands that we were told were there. Since then, uh, my partner to my left, um, and I walked, uh, the land, and it's ten acres, and it's not gonna interfere, wouldn't interfere with what we want to do. Uh, matter of fact, uh, it's, it's gonna limit me from what I want to do. Um, as far as baseball, there won't be no, um, outdoor baseball there because there, because of the ten acres isn't gonna allow us to do it. So, uh, what we want to do now is.
Oh.
Oh, he's frozen.
Must be doing it wireless. Mr. Burgo, uh, can you hear us? Da, 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 da.
Uh, he, I'm hearing some things. Steve, if you can hear us, you need to, uh, fix this somehow. Alright, um, suggestion?
Uh. We can wait.
I want to move.
We can wait to see if he connects, and.
Yeah.
Oops, he's gone.
Yeah, let's see if he can reconnect, and then, um, we just take the next item, and then we can go back to Steve.
Yep, we can do that.
Burgo, I should say.
Do, do we want to give him, uh, thirty seconds to see if he pops right back in, or?
Uh, question, well, who is his, um, other? I know Doug's here for something.
Yeah. Yeah.
And there he, oh, I just saw Burgo once. There he is. You gotta unmute yourself, Steve.
Sorry, I lost you guys.
Yeah, good thing for Donna, huh?
Yeah, thank God. I'm telling you right now, I'm, I'm computer illiterate, so I'm being honest with you. As the brains. But anyways, um, so getting back to that. Um, we will have baseball, but it'll be indoors. Uh, just to let you know, things have changed. Uh, we're going to put a, a Little League field inside, um, just the infield, the turf, so the kids can be there year-round. Uh, one of my main things is the elderly. Um, I've talked to Amy at the Council on Aging. Uh, we want to try and help the, uh, the elderly population in North Dartmouth, because there is nothing up there for them. Um, and they have to come down to South Dartmouth to really do anything. Uh, with the walk, I talked with Amy, and we talked about the walking, running, the walking, running track would be great for them. Uh, the, the weight room, the exercise room would be good for them. Also, uh, she asked me to consider doing yoga classes, uh, around four-thirty, five o'clock at night. Not a problem, we could do that also. We'll also have the, the concession inside for, for them, uh, you know, when they're walking and stuff, if they want to come down and get a cup of coffee or something, it'll be able to take it. We're gonna have the rec room with the pool tables and the ping pong tables for them to take part also. Uh, the elderly should be a big part of this. Um, and, you know, I, I'm glad, you know, we talked about this, uh, with them to get them involved, and we're gonna look on getting them involved. Uh, they're gonna be, uh, hopefully, uh, stable or a prime, uh, part of the BBA when it comes to the building itself. You know, now we, we're with the five indoor courts, um, the, the indoor, uh, baseball facility with batting cages. Uh, two, now we're gonna put two permanent indoor volleyball courts beside the ones that are gonna be on the basketball court, cause the basketball courts, there'll be five of them. Um, what am I forgetting? What am I forgetting? Oh, the conference rooms, the two classrooms, which we already have, uh, five principals, retired principals for tutoring. And the other thing is, um, I've been talking to the police chiefs in the area, and I talk with Dartmouth and, and Fairhaven and Acushnet, I'm working on New Bedford. Um, we want the police, I want to build a police room in the BBA building. I want the police to be able to come into my building at any time and take their guns off, put them in the locker, um, and go spend time with the kids. This is a perfect, perfect opportunity with all the things going on in this country. Um, and the thing, the bo, thing that bothers me is all police on that, and a lot of them are getting a bad rep. Um, because of the few that are, um, doing things and, uh, you know, kneeling on people's necks and killing people. Uh, that isn't a whole police force, and these kids need to know that. They need to, uh, be able to. And I also told the, the police chief, where we are now, I want to do that. I want, I don't want just Dartmouth's police. I want police from New Bedford, I want police from Swansea, from Wareham, from Fairhaven, from Acushnet, to be able to just to drive up, come out and spend time. Last year, I don't know if you all remember, we had a, um, uh, our tap-off at the beginning of the season. I had five different police departments, all the towns in the area coming through up the, uh, taps. And all of them told me that that was a great experience for them, because they got to meet kids that they normally didn't get to meet. And, uh, I'm talking with, um, Scott Joseph, Sergeant Scott Joseph, he said he talked about a hundred kids that he, he would have never reached. So I want to try and, and do the best we can to, to get the police involved in this. But the thing is, is this spot was not our first choice, it was your choice. It was your choice. It was your board who recommended it, and we, we seemed to think it'd work out great. And, uh, you know, we're gonna put five more outdoor courts outside there beside the five that we have. We're also gonna put four sand volleyball courts outside, because my sand volleyball courts at the BBA are constantly busy, constantly busy. Um, also, we're gonna put in two tennis courts there, uh, which people have been bugging me to, to, to put in, and we're going to do that. Um, the other thing we're putting in is four soccer fields. And I'm gonna bring somebody in to present his part of it. His name is Bobby Bernano. He used to be, uh, part of Saint Michael Soccer. Uh, he's now on, on his own, and I'm gonna let you give him, and let him give you the name of his soccer organization. Because the thing is, is that, uh, we're together, and we got a great opportunity here. So, uh, I'm gonna give you Bobby right now. Bobby Bernado.
Please.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for your time and, uh, giving us this opportunity. I'm, uh, Bobby Bernado. I'm part of, uh, South Coast United Youth Soccer. Uh, we're involved with, uh, the CCL New England. It's a club champions league, uh, all the way from Florida, uh, all the way up to the East Coast in Maine. Uh, it's the first, um, largest, second-largest, uh, soccer league in the whole East Coast. We, uh, just joined groups with, uh, US Youth Soccer, and with us joining US Youth Soccer, that provides us uh, opportunities in which US Youth Soccer has a Safe Places to Play Act. And what that does is get, uh, children off the streets, and US Youth Soccer will invest in our club and in our league to get children out, to get interest in the game, uh, bring regional tournaments in from, uh, teams from the whole East Coast, all the way down to Florida, up to Maine, and just invite all these kids to have a safe places to play, and also participate in a game that is very, uh, one of the lowest-cost games to begin as a young, uh, athlete to get them off the streets. So, uh, it's a pleasure that Mr. Burgo has invited us in to hopefully, uh, bring some stable, uh, places to play for the whole community, not just, uh, here on, uh, your town, but all the surrounding towns, and get the kids off the street, uh, a place that they can learn and respect one another. And, and all our donations and everything from US Youth Soccer could even uh, entice us and, uh, help us and get in a turf field to have the kids over, and we won't have any closures weather-wise or anything like that. The US Youth Soccer is fully committed to, uh, bringing an area up here to this place, uh, like no one else can have, and that'd be a great opportunity for all the children in our community, not just, uh, you know, in, um, the basketball field, but also in the soccer world. you know, in, um, the basketball field, but also in the soccer world.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bernado, appreciate that.
Now, the other thing, gentlemen, when he's talking about a safe place to play, you can't get a safer place than the BBA. We have never, ever, in the twenty-five years, the ten years in my house, be going into the sixteenth year, which is not gonna happen this summer, uh, at the BBA, we've never had an incident. And that's mainly because of the work of the children that come there, no matter where they're from, they respect, that's a big sign out front, this is respect. And, you know, like I said before, that means you respect the facility, you respect the neighbors. If you can't do either one of those two, please don't bother coming in. But, um, we're very strict with the kids and we treat the kids the way we wanted to be treated when we were teenagers. I mean, all you guys know that was. You know, and I've never had a problem with a teenager. Um, we've never had a problem there. And, um, that's one of the, one of the things I'm very, very proud of, the reputation we have. Because that has a lot to do with going forward. Uh, a lot of people in the beginning were very worried about other towns coming in. Hasn't been a problem, has not been a problem at all. So I'm hoping we can get approval from you guys to purchase this land and go in front of the, uh, town meeting members, uh, to do this. Um, and we will go from here. So if anybody's got any questions, please shoot.
I just wanna point out, uh, everyone that, uh, this will have to go through the procurement process and will also have to be blessed by town meeting. Uh, I just try to remember, was this tax title on, tax title land, Mr. McGinnis?
Uh, yeah, I can give you a little background on the property, so. It, it was, there's two parcels there that were acquired, uh, in the nineties through tax foreclosures. Um, they were never, uh, voted at town meeting to go to a particular department, so they're technically still tax foreclosure, so, you know. Um, the board could sell the property without going to town meeting. Uh, however, if the board were to sell the property, it would be with no restrictions and would be to the highest bidder, so if the board would like to go through the thirty B process and put some stipulations on the use of the property, uh, the recreation wise, uh, it would have to go to the thirty B process and be bid out. Uh, and then, and then, once the vendor was selected, these can go in either, either order, but they need to be done together. Then it would need to go to town meeting. So you can either go to town meeting first and say, we wanna sell the property, um, and we're gonna do a thirty B process, uh, and have a restricted use. Or you can go through the thirty B process, but part of the award would be pending town meeting approval. Um, and, you know, uh, so, but some other points of interest, just, and that's the property. Um, it's one of the largest properties in town that the town, uh, owns. So, and this was, uh, Mr. Burgo, uh, was talking about many of the things that have been discussed in the community center study that we're doing. So, uh, you know, there's clearly a need in town for this, uh, type of facility. I mean, his is much more complex, but ours was looking to combine, uh, the Council on Aging programming with, uh, Park and Rec program, so. Uh, but this, you know, as part, as you remember, as part of that consultant study, we identified some lots in town. Uh, one being where the old police station is, but this was one of the other lots that the consultant is looking at as, uh, for its feasibility. Um, but other than that, that's kind of where, uh, things are at with the parcels.
Uh, let's see, uh, thank you for that. Um, I think we would want some restriction on the land so that a developer doesn't come in and do something else with it. I think it's important that we tie it, tie it to recreation, so that means we have to go to town meeting, which would be my proposal. I think we should go to town meeting first and then do the procurement, the thirty B process afterwards. Uh, what would my board members say?
John first.
Mr. McDonald.
No, actually, John had his hand first.
Okay, go ahead, John.
I, I agree with you, Frank, and I was just gonna ask, which, which step would be the fastest step? And it sounds like going to town, town meeting to release the land would be the first and quickest step with the stipulations on the land.
Well, that town meeting would vote, uh, to allow the board to, uh, put the property up for sale. Uh, part of the warrant article would have to mention any stipulations or conditions that would be placed upon the sale of the property.
So let's get it done.
So, so we could possibly make this town, this fall town meeting then, if we start now?
I believe so.
I believe, I'd have to confirm with town council.
But if we do procurement first, we may not because of the timeframe. But if, if that's, if the first thing we do is town meeting, you know, directly there, I think we could probably do that. That's my, my take on it.
It would be difficult, I can tell you, to go through the procurement process for, uh, you know, a project like this before October, particularly with, you know, elections coming up, things like that, so.
But if we, if we get the permission to do, to sell the land, then we we can go through the procurement process after October and you could probably, if everything goes correctly, goes the way, you know, it, it's looking, um, you should be able to have this all done by the spring, correct?
Uh, yeah, I, I don't see why not. I mean, we could certainly start drafting a request for proposal, it just wouldn't be ready and finalized.
Until after we know what's, we can do it.
Correct, but I, I mean, I think, uh, part of the warrant article for town meeting would really have to have a lot of detail, a presentation on kind of what is going to be done. What's, you know, what are the stipulations on the property specifically, uh, what are the plans? I, I mean, uh, for the board's plans for the property, uh, you know, you, you want, it's, it's still a procurement process. Uh, and Mr. Burgo has great ideas, but it's, you know, in order to be equitable and adhere to the state's procurement guidelines, you'd have to do an, an open process. Um, and you'd wanna, you know, part of the articles maybe have a reverter clause so that if, you know, parcel wasn't developed over a number of years, um, there'd be some requirements, uh, that to revert it back.
Sounds good. Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, I, I remember when, um, this was, the idea was broached by, um, David Kressman and, um, Attorney Savasano. Um, and, you know, I'll be honest with you, this is my neighborhood. You know, and I am not a NIMBY and I would welcome this with open arms. Um, this site, at some point in time, um, the town was looking to, to put housing up, but that never came to fruition, um, because of timing and because the availability of the housing, of the stock, of, you know, and also going through the government, it just didn't happen. So now we have this opportunity to provide, um, to provide some type of recreation that the town cannot provide themselves. Um, and this is very important. You know, I mean, we could, we have paid lip service about doing something, um, about this for years and nothing has ever been done. Now is an opportunity to give a private nonprofit the opportunity to do what the town cannot do. We have, this town has solely relied on these nonprofits for baseball, for basketball, for football, for soccer, for lacrosse, um, for girls softball, girls basketball, you know. To be honest with you, I'm ashamed, we all should be ashamed, and we have to thank people like Steve Burgo, like Donna Burgo, his board, you know, um, DYFL, DGAL, DYSA, DYAa, uh, DLL, Dartmouth Lacrosse League, I think is, is the name. You know, we have to thank those organizations for stepping up, doing what the town has failed to do over these years. So I am, I'm, I'm stoked for this, uh, and I totally endorse this one hundred and two percent.
I agree. Mr. Herron?
Yeah, I agree with Sean, but I'd like to say that other towns and cities faced with similar financial problems that we have have been doing joint ventures with, uh, private enterprises and nonprofits to get the, uh, the, uh, the services and facilities they need for their community in the past. So this is a great opportunity for us. So thank you, Mr. Burgo.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Uh, great respect for Burgo Basketball what Steve has done, it's impressive operation. Uh, I was not around personally, uh, for the, uh, for the, the interest in the other piece of property. And, um, your presentation, although it was, uh, was well done, Stephen, had a lot of motion attached to it because you're committed to it. Uh, I, I don't, I, I sort of know where it is, but I know nothing about the plan and I, I'm just a little confused as to why we didn't get a little more material. Because I'd like to jump on board, but I don't know a damn thing about it, other than what you just described. And if we wanna get this thing going, I think there's a lot of education, starting with myself and others to know what, uh, the plan is and the, the property and its use, et cetera.
Mr. Burgo?
Yeah, um, just to let you know, um, we could have had all that done, but I was kinda told that we really didn't need it right now. The thing is, is that, uh, the other thing too to let you guys know, which I didn't present, is that I've been talking with DGAL. The girls have been on the back burner forever, forever. And they know that, I've talked with the president, and they know that once the BBA is done, that the girls are gonna get prime choice of court time there. Because I'm tired of them having to fight the band and this one there and that one there to get to middle school or to get this and get that. It's, it's time for them to be brought front and center and, uh, let them be part of this. Because, uh, there's a need, there's a great need. I mean, this building should have been done ten years ago. Um, not by any fault of ours, because we've tried. Um, we've got two point five million invested in this business and in-kind donations and donations. And as Mr. Bernaro can tell you, we're ready to go. We have volunteers right now that who are ready to go down there and stop work tomorrow if we got it. We're ready to go. We're ready to get this done. The town cannot afford to do this. I don't care who comes up with what ideas. The town cannot afford to do this. And a lot of their ideas, and I'm gonna be right up front with you, where do you think it came from? It came from Burgo Basketball. Okay, these are people who are trying to compete with us. I don't have a problem with that, because it's competitive world and that's fine. But the town cannot afford to do this. And we're more than willing to take care of this town and other towns around us and make sure that this gets done. We're ready to go. We're ready to go. There's no problems on our end. We're ready to go. And the thing is, is it's not up to me, it's up to you gentlemen to make this decision whether we go forward or not, and the, and the town meeting members, whether we go forward or not. Now, as far as bringing the, um, the, uh, elderly into this, nobody's ever done that before. And it's about time, it's about time it has been done. And if you think about it, there is not one facility in this area that has a little league baseball diamond turf field in it that the kid can practice year round. We have Todd Swords who used to play for the, uh, LA Dodgers, who's going to run that part of the facility. And the other one I forgot is that we're bringing in karate. Okay, we have a karate studio that's up on, um, France Corner Road right now, that's more than willing to bring his, his, uh, karate studio in there. And, uh, you know, we have this, uh, South Coast Volleyball, who's gonna fill the place also. So as far as filling the place and being occupied, we're gonna be occupied twenty-four seven. And, uh, we just, we just need your goal to get this done. We just need to get the selectmen to approve this and then get the town meeting members to approve this and do whatever we gotta do to get this passed. And then out to bid, whatever we gotta do for us to get this all taken care of.
Mr. McDonald?
Um, with that, I make a motion that we engage Sean McGinnis and Attorney Savasano and, uh, Assistant Town Council Brian Cruz to craft an article, uh, to sell this piece of land, um, as with restrictions that this part, these two parcels are solely for recreational purposes only.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any, any discussion?
Uh, I.
Go ahead, Mr. Tannenbaum.
I, I'm, I'm in favor of this, I'm gonna vote for it, but I, um, uh, in terms of, uh, a vision of what it's gonna look like and what it's gonna take us to gain support from, from, from the town members and eventually town meeting, um, I, I'd like to know, uh, what kind of framework we can take in terms of getting the word out and the plan and what it's gonna look like, because I, uh, I, I think that that's important, and then, then people can make a, uh, a, a vote that's informed and know what's going on.
Dave, I promise you, we'll get everything to you. I, I'll bring the blueprints to you as soon as I can. And, uh, so you see what's going on and you can follow them to whoever you want, because we're working with somebody who's very invested in the town. Uh, he did our first plans and that's Timmy Baba. And, uh, I'm not worried about it, he'll figure everything out, or we have figured things out, and I'll get the plans to you as soon as I can talk to Tim.
And I, I could almost venture to guess that if, whatever happens to the outcome of this motion, if it's favorable, Mr. Burgo and his organization will be working very hard to get all that information out way before town meeting.
No, I hear you. Exactly.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, second. Uh, roll call vote, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
And me, yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Now we'll just go on from here.
Let's go.
I'll get those plans to you guys, uh, I'll get them to each and every one of you, and, uh, so you all can take a look at it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burgo.
Did you wanna, did you wanna copy that also?
Which Sean?
Uh, town administrator.
Uh, yes, please.
All right, all right. Oh, Sean McDonald's gonna get it anyways, he knows.
Start calling him Harry.
All right.
Steve, I, um, the, the, what I'm really looking for, nothing to do with my ability to prove it and look it over, because I, it's just that I think that the more information people have, they can look it over and comment on it and then vote on it, uh, is what I think is appropriate. That's what I'm looking for.
Oh, that's not a problem, because we did that the first time when we, when we, um, got this approved. As a matter of fact, the first time we did it, we had a scale model. I'm not gonna go that far. You know, but the thing is, e- everybody will know, uh, we'll get it out in the paper wherever we gotta do it. We'll get it done because this is long overdue. This is long overdue.
I mean, there's a, there's a long approval process involved there, so we gotta make sure.
Oh, yeah, I know. I mean, uh, Dave, uh, fifteen years is a long time. It's a long time, so I'm willing to wait a little while longer.
Great.
Thank everybody. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Bernado, also for us.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Have a good night.
You too, take care. Interim Town Clerk update is the next topic.
Uh, yes, so, um, you know, we've advertised for an interim, uh, town clerk uh, all over. I've caught, as I've mentioned in previous meetings, I've contacted the, um, Massachusetts Clerks Association, the New England Clerks Association, trying to find an existing or retired clerk. Uh, it's been extremely difficult, to say the least. It's just a tough year. Even if a clerk wants to help, I mean, we've got two big elections coming up, there's a lot of election changes, so. Uh, but we have had some applicants, um, that we, I've done one interview, there's two more, uh, this week. My goal is to, you know, call the applicants and then maybe present a finalist or two to this board, um, for selection, trying to get that done ASAP, so it would be very quick. Um, we also have been working in the clerk's office, uh, Kelly Thompson, who was a clerk in the office, has really done a tremendous effort. I give her great kudos. She's really, uh, picked up the ball and that department has not been easy with the town clerk and the assistant leaving. Uh, she has a good grasp on things. We provided her, uh, with, she has two volunteers down there helping with some of the work. We have support from this office and other offices, so we're, uh, providing her as much support as possible. We've also advertised for some temporary clerical support in that office. I'm trying to move as fast as possible to get some, uh, labor forces in there, and it's been, uh, going well. Uh, as I mentioned previously, I met with an elections consultant uh, to help us evaluate where we're at for this upcoming elections, the primary in September. Uh, she met with us, she met with me, she met with all the employees in the clerk's office before they left, so she is generating a report uh, to submit to, uh, to me to kind of lay out where we're at and what needs to be done prior to the election. So I should have that this week as well, so. Um, other than that, uh, you know, we're trying to do business as usual as much as we can. Uh, Greg Barnes was also appointed the interim assistant clerk, uh, because we needed somebody, uh, with authority to, uh, certify things that the clerk needs to certify. So, uh, that happened last week prior to, uh, Ms. Maderas leaving, so uh, we're okay for the short term, but, uh, we need to get the office staffed and get prepared for the upcoming election and town meeting.
Sounds like things are well in hand and, uh, thank you for the work you're doing. Mr. Tannenbaum?
Uh, I, I think that, uh, the, the way we were put in this situation uh, was, uh, almost uncalled for, and I, I was, I was not, not in favor of what happened and how it happened and when. Uh, but Sean McGinnis, uh, when he first started working, came into office, he went into the personnel business right away and uh, look at the people that he hired and how well they're doing. Uh, quality people, I think that I great faith in the process. I hope that, uh, uh, if there's anything that I think that we can do as a board to help you get these people in, or just getting bodies in there, I think it's, uh, it's gonna get, only get worse, not better. Because you can just look at the schedule for town, for the election and for town meeting, it's, it's all over us right now, it's crawling right, right behind us by the minute. So, uh, I think, uh, you've proven you can do it and you have to do it again.
Okay, everybody all set? All right, let's go to the Route Six, uh, Pedestrian Safety.
Uh, okay, uh, in light of the. Uh, okay, uh, in light of the uh fatal accident that happened on Route Six uh recently. Uh, we got together internally with uh Police Chief, uh Fire Chief, uh and Joe Vera, our Safety Officer. And uh drafted a letter to uh Mast dot on some concerns we have along Route Six. Uh, one of them was uh a recommendation was to install lights on the utility poles in the area. Uh, Mr. Vera had identified a number of poles. Uh, we're getting an estimate right now from our lighting vendor to install lights on those poles. We should have those this week. They might have came in today. Um, as soon as we get that, we'll move forward with that. We've also contacted, I've contacted Mass. Uh, Highway about uh maintaining the vegetation along that section of the road. Uh, they've agreed to evaluate it and maintain it and take and go out there. Uh, in addition to that, I've asked them for a meeting on safety issues in that area. We've scheduled a meeting for August fourth. To review uh what can be done to make the area safer uh in this specific area where the uh. The accident was, but also along other areas of Route Six, so I will uh update the board on that meeting uh after it happens.
Great.
Yes, um, I don't put my faith in the state in cutting the vegetation. That area of the vegetation that Mr. Vera, uh, that Sergeant Vera. Sergeant, yeah, Safety Officer Vera um has uh pointed out. Uh, we have sent a letter to the owners in the past. Um, they are John and Debbie DeMello. Um, asking them to cut it. Uh, I have seen almost on a daily basis, people walking into the road. Because they can't pass because of that vegetation. The problem is this. The state puts people into the Capri. Puts people into the Best Western. Puts people into Moby Dick and puts people into Dartmouth Motor Inn and basically leaves them there. They don't give them any facilities, any type of help, any type of situation to make their rehousing available. And these individuals are walking up Route Six, down Route Six to the pharmacy. To Walmart and beyond. And. And as part of that situation, you see the shopping carts up and down Route Six. This is the situation. The state has created this problem. We also went through bells and whistles to get. Uh, a recent development that Michael Panagakis did in their yoga studio to get sidewalks. The state said it wasn't necessary. We pitched a hissy fit. And finally got the state to acquiesce and say yes. Any new development that's on Route Six, any type of renovations has to have sidewalks. There has to be sidewalks up and down. If the state is going to house people in these. Areas into these three motels, then they should also obligate to have a safe way for these people to pass without being part. Become a statistic. It's not fair to the motorists and it's definitely not fair to the people who live there. This is absolutely ludicrous. And this is something that we should work on with Senator Montigny and Representative Marky to make sure the state is well aware of. Because to be honest with you, I don't trust the state to come in and have vegetation. You wanna take a look at vegetation? Take a look at the country club in New Bedford from Stalkum Road to Hathaway Road. It's a. Pigsty right now. The way it just grows and and in another month, they're probably gonna have somebody come in and they, you know, I mean, the guy who cuts the lawn. The median strip doesn't even affect the time to pick up papers. He just cuts over the papers and all those papers are blown into the businesses, to the residents and to everywhere else along Route Six. And then you take a look at Route Six itself. Take a look at when you, the next time you're driving up, up Route Six or down Route Six. Take a look at the uh the the lights of O S Port Road and Route Six and France Connor Road, okay? Take a look at the tons, the tons of cigarette butts that are just sitting there and the dead weeds that are growing along the side. I mean, pretty soon you're gonna have forest trees growing in the median strip along Route Six. You know, they have that problem now on the highway where they have trees growing on the on the breakdown lanes. They're not taking care of that. I don't trust them to take care of Route Six. This is just a problem that's been going on for years and years and years and years, and we haven't held the state to have feet to the fire. It's time. And I'm getting, to be honest with you, I'm getting sick and tired of it and I'm sure people are getting sick and tired of hearing me bitching and complaining about Route Six.
Well, you obviously do it well because you finally got uh Walmart to close on Thanksgiving, so. Uh. You've made some progress there.
Yeah. I I can attest, I can attest to what goes on on Route Six. I I travel that that route uh every morning and every evening. Quarter of six, five thirty to go to Fall River and come back. And every day it does, it it never fails. You have one, two or three people crossing that street from early morning. To all day long, going back and forth and back and forth. I see it every day. And they're taking their lives in their own hands. These people come down Route Six. I see the police every once in a while now. I have monitored that area. Um, for the last three or four weeks now, there's a, there's a couple of cruisers. That are that are uh on the side of the road or in one of the parking lots, uh, one of them being the State Department, uh. Uh, the warehouse, whatever they keep their trucks. Um, but other than that, um. Sean's right. Sean's been bitching and moaning about this forever and he's right. And now that we have a statistic that can prove it out, is that, do they need another one? Well, that's. That's right. So I'm saying, so they need three people? Um, do they need, they, they can't afford to not do it, but. Uh, I don't know how else we can get to them, Sean, or Frank. Um, you think uh Montigny and um and our uh Chris Marky uh can put some leverage on them? I don't know. Uh, who else, uh, Mr. McGinnis, who else in the state? That we can, that we can send letters to or make phone calls to or, more importantly, bring them down and and talk to us. Make them come to a select board meeting.
Go across the road.
Yeah.
Uh, the worst part about it is, is that you have little kids. You know, little kids that are being, you know, with their mothers. Because they have no place, they have nobody to to watch them going across Route Six. Either they're in the carriage or they're walking, and that's unacceptable. What needs to be done is you need to drag the director, the the person that's in charge of housing these people down here. To see exactly what they're doing. And what we also need to do, to be honest with you, is we need to hold these motels, their feet to the fire. Because I want, I would like, and Mr. McGinnis, you can do this. I want a report from the Police Department as to how many times during the course of a year they show up at each of those places. At the Dartmouth Motor Inn, at the Moby Dick Hotel Motel and at um uh Capri Best Western. I wanna know that, because to be honest with you, every time, sometimes I come home, there's always a cop car in there. You know, why? You know, and if these guys are gonna continue to to house, you know, reprobates and people that that we don't want in our community or in any community. Then we gotta hold their feet to the fire too. This is getting out of hand. This is getting ridiculous.
Uh, Mr. McGinnis, uh, there's a lot of pieces there. Uh. Has has uh Senator um Montigny and Representative Marky, was that, were they part of the original plan to?
Representative Marky uh has been involved on this issue. Uh, he's been invited to the meeting along with uh Fire Chief, the Police Chief. Uh, Mr. Hickox, the DPW Director. Uh, Mr. McDonald's been heavily involved in this Route Six issue, so Sean, I believe I included you on that.
I will attend and I'll be a nice, I'll be a nice guy.
And there are a number of uh members from uh Mass Highway that'll be in attendance too, so. Productive meeting and we can talk about some of the historical issues that they're well aware of. They're aware that this was an issue as well, so. Uh, they're looking to address it and like I said, Representative Marky has been involved as well and he's he's looking to take some action, so. Um.
We make sure we see see uh Mr. Senator Montigny and keep him apprised too in case we need additional leverage.
I will do that.
Thank you.
And can we also get the letter out to the DeMellows regarding their property, because the state's gonna, it is, I think we'll have better. Um, better opportunity to have the DeMellows do it. And to be honest with you, um, Mr. McGinnis. If they don't do it by next week, I want our DPW to go out there and do it and then we build the DeMellows.
Right.
Mr. Tallo.
Yeah, I I was just gonna add, there's some real short-term issues here and one of them is to clean up that vegetation. And I think no matter who does it, it's gotta get done. If we gotta do it and build somebody back or hold them, but if that's a, if that's viable and get it done, we just have to do that. Uh, in in any other short term, that has to be fixed because it's easy and it's quick and it will actually help. Long-term on sidewalks and signs and um in in lights are certainly part of this committee's work, but we gotta get that short term, whatever they are. Uh, solutions out and done.
I agree. We don't want progress to get lost in the bureaucracy and the whole thing.
We gotta divide up the short term versus what, you know, what is gonna be, have to be a plan.
Yep. Any more comments? Okay. Uh, COVID nineteen update, Mr. McGinnis.
Uh, yes, so uh not much, well, there's a. Exciting news today. So Town Hall is open to the public uh for the first time in a, in a while. That opened up today, so. Uh, most offices are open. We have a number of uh safety and social distancing issues in place. Masks are required. Um, there is Plexiglas up in departments. Uh, there's some departments that are small, like planning and uh zoning. Board of Appeals, uh, where uh the members from the public can come up to the door, they'll have to make a phone call inside and the staff will come out and use a. Conference room to social distance properly. So we're open, uh, with the exception of the clerk's office. Uh, due to the staffing issues, they're gonna be open Tuesday and Thursday. Uh, by appointment uh for the short term until we get staffing up to uh levels that are normal. That's it for our COVID update.
Thank you very much. Uh, old business.
Uh, Bliss Corner, uh, no new updates. Uh, Cecil Smith, Mary Robinson, the same Lake Nokachoke, no new updates. Uh, the fishing pier, at the last meeting, uh, we talked about, uh, we're waiting for the state, uh, Ms. Wender had been contacting the state. Nearly weekly, uh, uh, I asked Attorney Cruz to reach out to the State's Council as they were reviewing the. Uh, latest agreement. He has heard back from them last week. They have said that they have their comments and they're gonna provide them to Mr. Cruz, so he thinks this week, so. We will continue to check weekly and I'll let the board know as soon as we have something that is uh finalized.
Okay, when uh when you and I talked this week, you had a suggestion on removing some of the items from this list. Which doesn't mean we forget about them forever, but means that they're not currently on the front burner. Would you like to explain that to the board?
Um, it's just some items that maybe uh under this old business, you know, some items, there really has not been action and if there is, we will bring it to the board. But it might be better to, under old business, you know, the fishing pier is something that's been in the process. We would leave Bliss Corner, obviously, we would leave because. Uh, the EPA and DEP is still working on that, but. Uh, Cecil Smith and Lake Nokachoke, maybe we remove those and if there is say an item of uh. Uh, interest or need, we would make that part of the regular agenda and perhaps under old business, we could put COVID update because that's something that's been updated. Uh, frequently, so.
Okay, is that okay with the rest of the board?
With me?
Yep, okay with me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
In regard to Bliss Corner, uh, uh, I think that if COVID wasn't existing, I think we probably would have had a. Maybe another uh meeting of all residents in presentation. And there's a lot going on. I I think it would be appropriate to ask someone from DEP who's involved. Uh, to come before us to tell us, maybe just give us a verbal update, so people can hear what's going on. It's not the same as having a another assembly as we had before, but I think, I think. People deserve a lot more information and whatever's out there, uh, and 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 I think that that'd be appropriate.
I can, I'm gonna work with uh the Health Director, Chris Meeshow, to see if we can get them to come in for an update.
Thank you. Soon as possible.
Okay, moving on, we have minutes for July thirteenth.
Motion to approve.
I have one comment.
Surely, go ahead.
Excuse me, um. The regard to the meeting of the Finance School and Select Board. Um, it seems in the notes it says that um that the the boards will all meet. I I, my recollection was it would be. The specified members from each, uh, once we got the numbers in and then presented to the boards as well. This seems, it seems to me to me that it says, um, uh, that the entire boards would meet again. I don't recall it to being that way.
Uh, no, back in when uh COVID first started, I wanna say in March, uh, there was a joint meeting. Uh, with a s- a select board, FinCom and School Committee where uh there was some budget discussion at the time. There was a lot of unknowns and it was agreed that when we had some numbers to evaluate, uh, there would be a a committee put together, member of the select board, member of the. Committee, so that that's been in place. We're just haven't had the numbers, so that that was voted and it was just kind of agreed upon again at our last meeting.
Okay, just.
Three boards, it was just uh representatives of each of the boards.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
Okay, did did we get a motion on these or? Okay, oh, did we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve minutes for July thirteenth. Roll call, Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Tallo.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. Hammer.
Yes.
And myself, yes. They are approved. Anything else, Mr. McDonald?
Um, Mr. McGinnis, did we get an um, an update from Farm and Coast on that letter sent to them? They updated their application and whatnot?
They contacted uh Christine Amaral in my office today about what can be done to uh. Get their license. They seem to think there was some confusion about uh being contacted. Uh, so Christine was working with them today to try to get uh Sergeant Vera out there and uh. Our zoning enforcement officer, David Requena, as well, so. Um, we're trying to get them licensed.
Good, great.
Can I?
Yep, yes. Maxine.
Can I address the board? Hi, so I'm Maxine Heber. I'm from the Dartmouth YMCA. Um, I spoke to Christine. Last week and she actually told me that I was, that's why I've been sitting here. Um, she told me that I was on the agenda for this evening to come. Um, in front of the board, so I apologize. Uh, so, yes, there was a a misunderstanding. Uh, and I think it was just a miscommunication, not on anyone, you know, not to point any fingers, um, we didn't realize, I'll say I did not realize. That I needed to come before the board. Um, we had applied for a. A charity um auction license and that had gone through and it was actually the state that had notified me. That I was missing the step of going um in front of the town, which is I reached out to Christine.
Yes, uh, Mr. McGinnis.
And I apologize, Maxine. I, this was, this should have been on the agenda tonight. It was not, but I can talk to the board uh and. Uh, we can put it on the next agenda for a formal approval that. Uh, the Y was doing um eh uh in their annual event, Farm to Table, uh, due to COVID. Uh, it was different this year, they were, they were having the food items to be picked up to go, but part of that was having a wine bottle. Uh, they were trying to do the right thing and be licensed properly. They contacted the ABCC. Uh, in plenty of time, but between that back and forth with the ABCC, uh, they were, uh, the ABCC telling them that they need to work through the town to get approved. Uh, they were, it was after the last select board meeting, so I'm speaking with uh Mr. Gracie, the Chair. Um, occasionally, this board has reviewed items after the fact when there have been timing issues. So we suggested that the Y come in to the next meeting for approval of. Uh, the event, uh, to give them approval to serve the the wine, the handout bottles of wine for to take out. So, uh, I did not include it on on this agenda. I apologize. I could put it on the next agenda. I mean, uh, Maxine, you don't. I believe need to show up. I think you've stated what the issue was, but the board, we would just have to uh approve the one-day license.
Yeah, I I I gave my informal approval because we had just completed the meeting and I didn't wanna hold up the the schedules. Uh, program that they wanted to do, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I know, I know for next year now.
I think that the rest of the group that would allow.
So the the, the event was at the Dartmouth Y.
You just muted yourself, Maxine.
Um, the event was at the Dartmouth Y. It was last Friday.
Oh, okay.
Great.
Mr. Mickelson.
Uh, and something else, thank you very much, Maxine, by the way. I don't wanna take your, take, take away from your time. Uh, so, uh, how about an update on the the uh police uh modules? Are they still, I haven't driven by there in a while.
Uh, yes, I can give you an update on that, so uh. The town um was doing a procurement to have someone come in and move the modules. They had asked for an extension into mid-July. So, um, I granted them the extension. We weren't doing anything with the property, so. Uh, I should be hearing from them. Now it's getting late. I will contact the them tomorrow to see what the status is of the moving of the modular units.
Yeah, all right. And and another thing, um, I think uh uh, Mr. McGinnis, we need to send a letter to Paul Downey. Uh, in in thanking him for the donation of the uh, the desks and office uh. Modules that he gave to the town. I think he gave four, fourteen full modules. Uh, I think we owe Mr. Downey uh. Uh, I think we owe Mr. Downey uh, a letter of thanks.
I will do that.
Thank you.
All right, what, what modules?
Well, uh, I'll let Sean explain it.
Uh, Mr. Downey had a facility, I believe it was in Fairhaven, that he, was a call center with a number uh, and with a, a lot of desk units, modular desk units, cubicle type that he wanted to donate to the town if there was a need for them. Uh, particularly as we were preparing, you know, trying to make room for COVID and social distancing. Uh, Tim Lancaster and Chris Meeshow were in touch with Mr. Downey about uh, those units. I know had they had picked them up, but I'm not su- I'm not sure exactly where they are. I'll find out from uh, Tim.
I think fourteen, they picked up fourteen, but to add a little more to this, these, these units uh, were never used. They were in wonderful condition. They were installed, they're elect, you know, the, the desks, the desks all have electricity uh, o- options. And, and you can move them in, in any configuration as you want to set up the uh, the sides, the back. Um, and in perfect, perfect condition. And uh, I'm telling you, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars that he saved the town.
Oh, that's great. Thanks for the update. Anything else? I will need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, move it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by uh, uh, Mr. McDonald, a, a second by Mr. Hammond. Uh, roll call vote before I use thoughts here to, to make it official. Uh, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Tallobaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.